Yes, but I believe it has that setting where when someone speaks, it kind of rotates unless you turn that off.
Yeah, there was just an update done on the system. I know it's different icons now. Dodged the bullet there. And so, yeah, on our screen, it shows half of the city council chamber. So you can see us all, especially the councils.
You all, I can only see the first row of the audience.
Okay. Yeah. Grab the audience.
That's my best side is the audience.
Be kind of a feature here.
Where's the camera?
Be down on top.
That's good. It's kind of weird. It's like it's pointing towards us.
Yes.
It's got quite a bit of it. It's doing something funny because it's working according to Christie's stuff. I'm not gonna mess with it.
Get your skin yammed up pretty good.
I know. I gotta shine that thing up.
Good. Especially in the summertime.
Yeah.
Okay.
You did say it.
No, we shouldn't. I'm on my birthday probation. For my birthday. Oh.
It was one of the correspondence.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Garrett City Council, April 2nd, 2025. Meeting is called to order. Is there any conflict of interest from the council?
No, no, no.
No? Okay. Let's move on to the approval of minutes. For the regular meeting of the city council Wednesday, March 5th, 2025. Motion?
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion corrections that need to be recorded and having hearing or hearing none? I've got a question. I don't understand on page two. Oh, it's like the third or fourth sentence from the bottom. He requested the letter justifying resources to the public safety building project and inviting Senator Merkley to the May Community Public Safety Building Meeting. Is that she?
It was the representative at the meeting.
So he was requesting that Merkley attend the meeting?
He was requesting that Dana provide a letter justifying money that was needed for the public safety project. Wanted a letter for Merkley's office.
Oh, asking for the money and then justifying why we're inviting him to the the public safety meeting. Okay, thank you. I just was not following that for some reason.
Justifying why we need the money.
Why we need the money and inviting him to come and to be part of that.
Yeah, okay. Got it now. Thank you very much for helping me through the English language. All right, anything else besides my mistakes? Okay. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Still passed. Now going on in the minutes of the work session, the city council Wednesday, February 26, 2025. I'll take a motion if you have one.
Hope to approve the minutes for the work for the city council Wednesday, February 26, 2025.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, any corrections that need to be noted? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on. Planning Commission minutes. Is there anything anyone needs clarification from Chad about?
Uh, just wondering if we're gonna get a talk about FEMA stuff.
They are discussing it in the planning commission meeting this upcoming Thursday. Next Thursday.
Cancel.
Next, cancel. I don't have enough time. No, I don't have an update for you there.
Okay, so would you get one for the council and find out after they talk about it, when we're going to get an update?
Yeah, we'll have Garrett come to the meeting as well. I think we will have information. But yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
That takes care of that. Okay, so we've got all this stuff checked off already, and I'm not gonna report anything because that's the way I am doing things. Councilor reports, I'll go to Preston.
Bosch group and FFA. Most of it. We know it was already in the minutes. But they didn't have any meetings since last week. We got to spring them again.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, hold on, I'm going in order, so.
Yeah. Um, I met twice with Chad this month and concurrently did a check review. The checks are generally ready to go out when I've been to the most meetings and had a deep dive into the checks. It all looked good to me. The process seems to be working. Um, I did a two-hour education on the public meetings law via Zoom. It was a meeting done by Erie, Elsner, and Hammond. Um, the original date was March 20th, and I watched it over the 30th and the 31st. And I submitted the screen to Chad for the record. Um, I did a four-hour education on community sheltering during disasters. It was through a group. It was outreach from the SIR team in in the county, and that was, uh, it was helpful and interesting. Done the ham Women's Ham Radio Net a couple of times this month. And for anybody who listens, I'm Kilo Foxtrot 7, India Romeo November, KS7 IRN. Um, met with a couple of constituents regarding a couple of things I'll cover under concerns. And briefly, a show and tell, this is kind of a follow-up from a couple of years ago. I did some coffees with the mayor. Uh, group ladies came to me and they asked that we would consider doing composting as part of our recology effort. And we did follow that up with recology and got, uh, at least found out what it would cost, and then it would have to be across our whole town. They would have another collection. Um, so that never went anywhere, but at Christmas time, I bought our home an in-kitchen composter because I could no longer carry my 20-pound, 30-pound things of icky, yucky compost around my yard. So this is like a month's worth of vegetable stuff that's been composted. I have to do about four liters once about, once a week, and this is what it comes out. It's, and you just take it out and you add it to your garden pots and everything. And it's so much better for not sending the stuff to the landfill, one of the biggest methane producers around. So anyway, it's pretty cool. So to follow up from a few years ago.
Great.
All I have.
Thank you. Sharon?
Okay, so I also attended via Zoom the public meetings law, um, which is a two-hour, two-plus-hour presentation, uh, and learned actually quite a few things that I didn't know. So it was a good experience for me. Um, attended the airport committee meeting, uh, of note at that meeting, uh, was attended by the new public works director, Paul Stull, I think his name is.
Right.
Um, and he had some interesting things to say about the airport vis-à-vis seaside and possible events that the airport could be participating in. Uh, I met with two fish biologists from ODFW, and we walked, uh, the property between first and second. Uh, I'll talk more about that at the end of our meeting, under concerns, uh, but I wanted them to get eyeballs on the situation. Uh, and then I also walked the sound dunes with an arborist, um, from Restoration Pruning, uh, to get his input on best practices vis-à-vis the trees in the dunes. That's all.
Thank you.
Um, so it was a busy month. I attended a, uh, Betsy Johnson hosted a community meeting, um, with local members of throughout Clatso County, um, regarding, uh, federal funding impacts in on our, um, community. And during that, I gathered useful information about the state's 2025, 2027 budgeting process. And brought that information back that with Chad, and we, uh, worked together to plan to ensure Garrett was represented at the Oregon State Ways and Means Budget periods in the story of last Friday, which I'm sure he's gonna talk about in his meeting. Or I'm sorry, in his report. Also attended the Cedar, um, meeting, uh, went to State Water Caucus Day in Salem. Interesting presentation on lobbying for the city and providing testimony, um, regarding how things that they're doing, um, impact us, which we'll circle back to in just a minute. Um, wrote letters asking for support for our public safety building needs to Senator Weber, Representative Jabadi, and also to Betsy Johnson. Um, received positive responses indicating support from, um, both Weber and Jabadi, and had a great conversation with Betsy Johnson. Um, then provided written testimony in support of House Bill 3556 to allow for adjustments to transit lodging, tax revenue dispersments to our local communities that we can use more of that money to help, um, offset some of the problems that tourism brings to our community. And, um, upcoming very, very busy week on April 21st is groundbreaking breaking for Cannon Beach's $25 million City Hall Police Station project. This Saturday, Saturday, I'll be attending a town hall with Representative Jabadi at the Seaside High School. Our first budget meeting is on Tax Day, which is also the day that we have to do our statement of economic interest. Those are all due from us. Um, so don't forget that. And I was invited to speak at Seaside High School class again. Um, there's another PSB meeting on May 25th. Hope is it April 23rd? I have it down as May 23rd, but that might be my mistake. Um, it has to be April 23rd. Um, getting an update on their progress towards completing the cost estimates of the two top design project, um, designs selected by citizens in the council. Small cities meeting in Seaside on the 25th, and then I will be attending the League of Oregon Cities Spring Conference in Coos Bay at the end of the month. Um, gonna be camping with my husband, so might as well. And, um, I guess during my concerns, I'll talk about July 4th discussion adding that to the next agenda. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I forgot.
Well, then I guess you better speak up now.
I also attended the Clatso County Housing Task Force meeting, uh, and we had a, a presentation from a company that uh, is working with cities to help incentivize short-term renters to long-term rent their homes uh, to provide, uh, medium income housing. Um, so it's really interesting. Cannon Beach is, uh, pursuing that a little more, and the counties uh, the task force is looking at it maybe on more county-wide level. So, um, I'll stay on top of that as that develops or if it does.
Great. All right, is that it?
Sergeant Ian. I'm going for the chief's magics off at a conference. Um, I don't have any major issues to report on this month. Going on, just plugging along for any guys best service we can. I'll open any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Sergeant. Fire Chief Andy.
Hi. Um, have we got the stats done for you? We had, I know that we're 45, I was all ahead of last year for this month, but I, I haven't got the full number in for you. Uh, chief wasn't able to attend because we actually got a burn to learn house up on our district. So the crew tonight is prepping and training for our live burn, which will be coming up here in three weeks. Other than that, we've got some new volunteers coming in and I have EMT this weekend, so we're gonna have five new EMTs coming up, so.
Great.
Yes, Sam.
Were you all involved in the girl being swept out into the ocean?
We were not involved in that one now. They were able to handle it, uh, we, was it Cannon Beach? No, Seaside. I think Seaside was able to handle it on their own.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ask for money.
Uh, in March, there really was no significant deposits to report. Um, I do want to continuously remind everybody that Fund 40, uh, building revenues did improve over previous months, however expenditures continue to outpace, uh, the revenues. So this fund is just gonna have to be continuously monitored, uh, because at this point, it's in jeopardy of not being solvent. Um, but the expenditures are gonna cost more than revenues. So hopefully, building will pick up. Um, last year, it came in and we had a little bit of carryover, so maybe the springtime, things will look better and uh, people will start building again. Uh, noteworthy last month, uh, were payments in 10, 1051 for the completion of the Police Department's Security Compliance, uh, Renovation Program, Project. Uh, that was recommended by our city's liability insurance company, uh, in 10, 1360, to the Gearhart Volunteer Fire Department for the city's quarterly contribution for gas and clothing reimbursement for the volunteer firefighters. In 10, 1372, uh, for the annual, for some annual pump testing and services that were done for the fire department. In Fund 45, uh, partial payments to all of this year's community grant award recipients were sent out. And in 50, 5080, uh, for the replacement of the speed sign on Pacific Way, which was $7,200. And in 71, 7120 for professional assistance on the water modeling application process. Uh, just, just a reminder that the city's first budget committee, as Councilor Grove mentioned, is Tuesday, April 15th. So we hope to see you all back here and we'll get the budget message, um, and the budget document. We'll start the process.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Watts?
Um, so the state's Department of Land Conservation and Development has asked me to be on their work group for local land inventories. So it's going to apparently be a seven-person group. Um, the idea is to, um, write rule amendments, which would be adopted by the end of the year, which for the state is a really quick timeline. So, um, you guys will get to hear a lot more about wetlands and upcoming meetings about wetlands and other riparian issues, I'm sure. So I told them that, yeah, I agree, deserve. Um, and we certainly have had some issues here and in some of my other jurisdictions, so. Um, we've also had, Chad and I have had conversations with, um, DLCD staff to help understand the, um, the options coming out of the governor's housing bill from last session. We want to have a, as complete of a picture as possible for our bill of lands inventory and housing needs analysis. So we're continuing to work with the consultants from 3J Consulting to make sure that the lands identified are actually available. That, um, they have correct information because they were counting lots to our minimal lot size as being available. So those are just kind of constantly trying to get these issues down. And then in the event that we don't have a 20-year supply, um, what our options are. I think we have a lot of clarity on that now. And, um, we've had two total meetings with DLCD, so um, we'll be able to let everyone know what, what the options are on that. Um. We had an issue that came up this month as someone was trying to get a permit, uh, for, for tree cutting. And it's and I, I want to thank Angelina because she did an amazing job of watching the videos of all the meetings where we discussed the tree ordinance and for her to figure out how did we end up with the language that we ended up with. And then this was a, a situation where the way I was interpreting the section and the way that uh, Garrett was interpreting the section were just completely at odds. And so when Chad reached out to us, which we appreciate when he does that, and just said, hey, can I get some clarity? And I said, oh, yeah, it's this. And Garrett said, oh, yeah, it's the opposite. So, um, what we discovered, what Angelina discovered during the process was when we're talking about heritage trees, we mentioned that the heritage trees gave you was it would be a minimum of a 55-inch circumference. And so in our definition, we have trees, which means more than 38. And then we have heritage trees, which means more than 55, but is judged on a multi-point scale to determine whether something will be a qualified for an heritage tree or not. But instead of the 55-inch plus being in the heritage tree section, it's in the um, sexually cutting. And so it reads tree 55-plus inch in heritage tree. And so when you can cut a total of three trees, I interpret that to mean everything, uh, but a heritage tree, which we don't have any yet. Um, whereas Garrett interpreted that to mean the trees that were between 38 and 54 inches. And what that essentially does is makes it so unless there's like a, a health safety issue, uh, and there's also a narrow exception for solar that you can't cut down a tree 55 inches or over, practically speaking. So, um, I said, well, it's, it's up to the, it is up to the council to interpret it. I think we know we, we know how it happened, um, how Garrett pulled what he pulled and put it where he did. Um, so if you guys want to interpret the interpret the standard that the 55 is part of the heritage instead of a is part of the heritage process instead of a separate category, it would clear up ambiguity that exists now. Um, you can interpret it in the other manner if you want, um, because that's, I, I believe can be read either way. Um, which would create a separate category for 55-inch plus trees outside of the heritage tree process. Um, and then if we want to bring that back in order to remove ambiguity, either one way or the other. So however you guys want to interpret it, then we'd want to make sure that when we're reading it, we're all reading it in the same manner. Cause it's not ideal to have the city attorney interpreting one way and the city planner interpreting the other. It puts our city administrator in a pretty uncomfortable position, though I think the lawyer wins, but, uh, no, no, uh, we, we as staff aren't entitled to deference necessarily in certain interpretations. That's why it's really important to bring them to you, the council. So, um, we could do that kind of informally, or we can bring the ordinance um, back to read through the language and then um, do an interpretation at the next meeting, which then we send it out to the planning commission and back to the council, which um, not, not ideal, but yeah, this, this, this ambiguity does exist, and I believe there are multiple plausible ways to read the code.
Okay, so in other words, we need to do something informal right now, and now it satisfies everything?
If you, that's what I did, yeah.
Okay.
So if, if if your understanding is consistent with the meeting video, which was that the 55-inch was supposed to apply to the heritage tree versus create a third category of trees, then you would just indicate that that's how you interpret it. If you, if you want a separate tree category for 55-plus outside the heritage tree category, um, then let us know that. The impact, if it is a if it is part of the heritage tree category, it, it creates the minimum diameter for a heritage tree. If it's its own category because the large permit um, was for the non-development removal of more than three trees or, um, if the, if it was a heritage tree that was creating solar issues or what have you. Um, so because it was drafted for heritage trees, the process is very staff-heavy. Then also requires a lot of findings that for many trees will not be poss, it will not be possible to make them. So, and we have a, we have an instance this month where it's come up, um. So if it, it's just a question of, of whether we want to do a third category for 55-inch plus trees or not. And then if we want to do it informally or bring it back for formal conversations. And again, my interpretation was three total trees mean any tree that's not a heritage tree. That's how I read it. Garrett read it that 55 plus was a separate category. And again, I think, I'm not saying he was wrong. I think it can be read that way. Reviewing the meeting minutes, that doesn't seem to be what you intended, but, um, you are the ultimate judges of what you intended, not me, so.
Well, I always thought that we called on a 55-inch measurement as being a heritage tree beyond that, everything above and beyond that. So I don't see the need for making a third category. My personal field.
Okay.
That's my interpretation of what we did. Preston, you got something?
Yeah, so I mean, in your presentation in the beginning, you said that we didn't have any 55-inch trees.
What?
Yet.
No, I, I don't know what the subject is.
No, he, what he said is we don't have any heritage trees yet.
We don't have any heritage trees.
Nobody's gone through the process.
So to, to get a heritage tree, which requires the landowners consent that the, we believe the intent based on the video was that only trees that were 55 inches or more could be a heritage tree. So if you have like a 20-inch circumference, it couldn't be a heritage tree. That was the minimum threshold for a heritage tree. And then there was a 180-point calculation that was made in like all sorts of things like the health of the tree in order to qualify for a heritage tree status. So beyond the 50, the 55 is just the floor. And then whether it could become one or not is through this calculation.
Okay, so the, the property owner is the one that's requesting whether it's a heritage tree. The city isn't the city isn't saying that anything over 55 inches is automatically a heritage tree.
Correct.
Well, that's what he's asking us to tell him.
Right.
Yeah, I can give an example.
Yeah.
Of what this looks like. So there's a property that has three trees, and I invited also Mr. Sharon to help me measure this. Uh, I don't have the measurements in front of me. Uh, the three trees, what they wanted to do is take these three trees down because, uh, they just think they run the course. They don't like the way they look, the way that they've been handled. Almost from the stump up, they split out into multiple places. They're healthy trees and they're doing well. I, I don't even know what type of trees they were.
Hines.
Uh, they are hines. Um, and so the first tree measured, and I'm just gonna make this up for, uh, explaining it, measured like 47 inches. So that tree can be cut down with a permit. Can be one of the three trees per year. The second tree was about, uh, 58 inches uh, measured, and we had to be careful how we measured it because the, the, the trunk split right at the four and a half, just, just over the four and a half, but uh, I mean breast height. So where the trunk wasn't split, we measured it, and it was, let's say, 58 inches. The third tree, uh, because it's split and it started growing in all sorts of directions, but where we had to measure it by was still intact. It's about 74 inches uh, that pine is. So in effect, the second and third trees cannot be cut down because they do not have any of the exceptions. They do not, the tree is, is not, uh, creating a
The tree is is not uh creating a solar issue with solar panels or it's not creating any damage to the septic system. It's not creating any um uh issues with building because they're not building near there. What they want to do is they want to cut these down and replant about twenty other different types of trees in this area. But after measuring it and looking at more closely at the ordinance, I noticed that as soon as that tree gets fifty five inches. And unless it's dangerous or creating a problem, it cannot be cut down. Because it's because of the ordinance. Because it's over fifty five inches. And there there was when you're talking about this, you know, and in the past, a fifty five inch time or uh circumference tree is a. The old twelve inch diameter, right? And we used to in the old ordinance have you can cut down to five trees per year and a tree is defined by the city of Gerhardt as anything over twelve inches of diameter. Also fifty five inches in circumference. Then we change the ordinance. Now with the ordinance, the way that we're reading it and the way that we've interpreted it. No trees at twelve inches in diameter or plus can be cut down unless they're causing a problem. Or unless uh they're dangerous.
No, no trees can be cut.
No trees fifty five inches and above.
Thank you.
Can be. So we have the heritage tree where those would be protected if a resident wanted to have their tree perfected. And go through that process of the storing. And that was for trees that were fifty five inches and plus. But the way that the ordinance was approved, it also says any tree that's fifty five inches or plus. Basically cannot be cut down without one of those exceptions at all. So I'm looking at denying the permit to these folks and letting them know that they cannot cut down two of the three trees. Uh and uh under any circumstances with the ordinance and it's not a heritage tree.
And these are shore lines.
Uh no, these are a little different. They they sound a little different. They're uh straight up and they split up. Um they're I I don't know what type of pond it is. It's not spruce.
Kind of.
So that that's just an example.
Anyone else with questions or concerns?
Yeah, I I mean. Just like deja vu all over again. Um. I have several concerns. I think the first concern is that we voted on the way the wording is in the ordinance. That's the way the vote was taken. So to go back and say, oh, well, we didn't really mean that or, you know, I can interpret it this way. Or, you know, I don't really like how this reads or what however, whatever other comment you may have about it. That's not what we voted on and we did have a vote. So the fact that we're even having to look at this again is a little distressing to me, honestly. Um fifty five inch trees and above, we are as a community trying to protect those trees. So that we don't end up being seaside number two, okay? I mean, that's I think that's where we were coming from in this whole changing the tree ordinance is to protect some of those trees around town. Um so I my take is A, we already voted on and B, I don't really want to see it changed.
Okay.
Well. I would I got, you know, I was in this process early and I was in it late. And my take is that the heritage tree part of it came up. Very late in the discussion. I agree with Sharon. The purpose of it is to protect. Larger. Trees that. Mostly grow along the epoxy, not just there, but. That's the tree I think of when I think of a heritage tree. It's a citrus spruce along the epoxy. And I think of those as fifty five and up. And I think that putting in place that the. The person who owns the property is the only person who can decide that's heritage tree is. Giving a lot to the homeowners, a lot of responsibility. You'd like to think that they would make the right decisions, which is to protect our big old trees. But I think we should make the ordinance. Readable and interpretable for the staff. In whatever we intended.
Right. And just to clarify, this was an instance where I. Interpreted it the way I interpreted it and responded to chat and I don't know if he got Garrett's before mine or mine before Garrett's. But you had two people reading it in good faith and coming to completely different conclusions. And so that's why we then went through to try and figure out, okay, at what point. Was it a council directive that he add the language to the where he added it? And it wasn't. So it wasn't. It didn't come from the council um at a meeting. And so I said, it kind of it feels like a scrivenor error to me, but because this is an ordinance and because of the amount of time. That it took, I'm not comfortable making that determination outside of bringing it to the council. So and again, we can make this an agenda item out of future agenda and we can walk through the video and everything else. Um Angelina actually like date stamped all of it, so you can go to the exact different moments in the videos. To see where the conversation occurred, but. Uh right now, staff's in kind of an untenable position because they have the. Two quote unquote experts interpreting it at loggerheads.
Right, but the way I recall sitting through. All these meetings for all these years. Is fifty five inches is when we we said that's a a tree we don't want cut. It's not a heritage tree. It's a tree we don't want cut without some kind of restraints. Put in there and put in place. The heritage trees are something a landowner does and we're not involved with that until they decide that's what they want and they come to us. And they want to go through the process. Is that right?
So if that's the consensus of the council, that's how we will interpret it going forward.
Well, that's I'm reading from from the signed copy right now online and it says under. D requirements, um subsection four, removal of more than three trees within any twelve month period. Comma or removal or impact to the root zone of one or more heritage trees. Or fifty five inch trees may be permitted as a major tree removal permit. But that decision is the planning commission. So the planning commission may grant or deny a request for a major tree removal permit. So I don't even know why you would be making that decision. I'm reading this that that's an application that they submit to the planning commission. The plan which has this to scout them.
So then if you go to the following section that discusses the grounds for the major tree removal. That's where then it goes um to are are any of those factors at play?
Well, I I still think that you have a problem if you don't submit it to the planning commission. If you if you decide outright, because we told them that they get to have a planning commission decision.
Okay, so.
Based on the criteria.
We've spent a lot of time on this. Let's get the information from Angelina. To all the counselors, we'll look at it. We'll bring it back as a council consideration at the next meetings. You guys are going to be in limbo until then. But let's put it into this, so everyone has got their say and everyone's seen what we said. On video. So we can interpret whatever it is we're going to interpret and we can decide. All right, a meeting. Thank you, Peter. Is there something else?
No, nothing pressing.
Nothing pressing. Is there any um information on the meeting loss?
Um yeah, I mean, we're uh. That that is. That is being reinterpreted by the state and by the O G E C. And so we've we have reached out to them to get some more information. Um there there are some things that are just cut and dry, public meetings, there are other meetings. That it comes down to whether it's information gathering versus. Recommendations, formal recommendations, which can get a little bit gray. And so we're gonna have to start looking at meetings kind of on a particularly with any um. I'll just call like an adjunct committee that you bring up. We're gonna have to look at those meetings. On a subject matter basis and on the is there, what's the intended outcome of the process basis in order to make that interpretation?
Okay, because I'm just curious as to. Yeah, we have that um bench committee for however long it was. I just want to know if that's the kind of committee that we need to notice meetings on, because there are. And may be in the future, other committees that we have.
Right, so it it the under the new guidance from the state, um. If if it's just information gathering, so if people get together to gather information about. How were benches paid for in the past, all of that, and I think the default should be public meeting. So when in doubt, let's call it a public meeting, notice that everything else. It it in the new interpretation, at the point. If that group changes where they're like, you know, council, we did, we've collected some information and we. Uh written a report, um much like councillor Sharon did. She got different tree orders from different cities. It was for informational purposes only. It wasn't to make a specific recommendation per se. She she did do that in a public meeting, but the gathering that information, her and the people who did it, that wouldn't be a public thing. If it's a committee that then involves you, that's going to make a recommendation. To the council to take specific action, that's what we need to be really careful about. Because um people should be able to see. The what that committee relied upon in arriving at their recommendation to you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, is there anything else for Peter? Thank you very much, Peter. Chad?
Uh thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll just give a quick uh update. Uh you got my city administrator report. Uh the last line on meetings and coordination is a duplicate, so you can scratch that out. Um and what that line was talking about was just a couple of this has attended the work for a legislative joint Ways and Means Committee public hearing. I did that last Friday night, started at about five. This is something that they has been looking forward to or looking for us. Um and what it is is that we had all the representatives from Oregon uh on the Ways and Means Committee. Uh and they hear for two minutes at a time, different cities or organizations stumbling for some of the projects that they have submitted to their representatives. Uh for funding uh from the state of Oregon and potentially federal uh funds as well as they come through. Uh so I I went and attended that meeting. I did not get a chance to speak. They had a hundred and thirty people signed up for two minute sessions and only had two hours to do it. So there wasn't the opportunity to speak. But prior to that meeting, I did submit all of the information on the water caucus. Uh and projects that we talked about earlier a few months ago. I submitted all those projects to the Ways and Means Committee. I also submitted a sheet on the public safety building. Just to see um if there's potentially any uh possibility of funding that might be coming to the station and keeping it top of mind. Uh and then because I wasn't able to testify in person, uh they extended the period to forty eight hours to submit testimony online. And so I wrote a letter uh basically explaining the projects that we have. Uh what some of our issues are and asking for funding and safety. So we did that. Uh it's the first time Gerhardt has participated in that and it happened over two years. So I'll let you know what comes out of that, uh if anything. Um other than that, uh another update, I off sheet is just save the dates. We've got the budget meeting coming up Tuesday, April fifteenth to sixty P M. That is a public meeting. We'll have the five budget committee members and the five city council members uh there to help us through uh the budget process. We have the Earth Day Cleanup Day uh and Cans for Koho, so that's Saturday, April nineteenth from eight to eleven. So we bring out the uh bins, uh we allow people to dump garbage, uh nothing dangerous from tires. We'll also have electronics bin there and some representatives from Western Oregon Waste Ecology uh to assist us with that. Emergency cash container program, uh there's an access day, Saturday, April nineteenth from nine to eleven. Where people will be able to access their emergency cash containers or purchase one or. Uh purchase, fill one and have us take it up to the uh storage site for those. Uh council fifth Tuesday work session, we don't have an agenda yet, it's been determined, but again, that's gonna be Tuesday, April twenty ninth at six thirty P M. And then uh Public Safety Committee meeting number four at the Fire Hall. Monday, May nineteenth, six to seven thirty. Uh those are meetings that are coming up. The last thing I have to update is that you did get a draft. I uh. Water rights application. Uh Chris Hyatt, the Hyatt Geo Sciences completed that task. The draft is, I reviewed it, uh and uh Mark McFadden, our public works director, is about to review it. Uh once he does that, which will happen this week. Uh Chris will go to the county and get a land use determination based on what it is that we want to do, which we've already had that once, so that'll happen again. And then after that land use determination, which is administrative, uh then we'll be submitting that to uh W R D. And so that can happen uh as early as next week, depending on how successful we are with it now. But next week is uh we'll be looking at actually submitting that. And I went through the entire um. So many pages and there's just a few things I wanted to highlight on there of what the report says. Uh the hydro uh geological findings show that Gerhardt lies on the Sandy aquifer, which is highly permeable. It's recharged by local precipitation, um about seventy six inches a year. Capable of yielding more than the city's projected needs. Uh other notes of interest is the groundwater primarily flows west to the Pacific Ocean, of course. And then also east in the Ecoxy Creek, so all the rain that's connect uh collected into this part of town goes into the aquifer and the Ecoxy Creek. Uh groundwater has not shown signs of saltwater intrusion. The the interesting part is Neacoxi Creek is gaining spring fed by the groundwater that we're pulling out. Not that we are actually pulling out of the Neacoxi, so we're actually recharging the Neacoxi with the way that our system works. And just a couple of other things, the model shows that the water drawn. Um from the eastern sand dune recharge areas is not from the Neacoxi Creek. Uh there's no significant impact on the creek or saltwater intrusion risk as per our report draft. And um that our proposed increase for the C F S is that we're looking for is only one point five percent. Of the aquifer's total budget. Uh or availability of water, I suppose that would be the say that. So that's just a quick update. Uh we'll wrap that and have you answer any questions?
Any one of the questions for Chad?
Uh just what what exactly is the the county's role that Chris has to go up there and get?
To make sure that uh our wells and where we place them and how we're using them is uh is within the land use regulations. For the state and the county and the city, uh it's just part of our reporting. So just before we submit the report, we tell them here's where our wells are, here's how we got them there. Here's the rules uh that we're abiding by and that everything is okay for us to be there. That it's not something for our scope uh of those lands.
So we're like looking for a signature from somebody or something?
Yeah, we have from their planner that just basically looks at this and says this is already approved. Uh here are the documents and we submit those.
Okay, anything else for Chad? All right, moving on, visitors, Melissa Eddie, street dance.
We're gonna street dance? Yeah, I'm here to street dance. Um seems like the community loves it.
Yours.
My name and address, oh, uh Melissa Eddie. Um I am at one oh two tenth Street, Gerhardt, Oregon. And I'm here to make the street dance event proposal for twenty twenty five. Great. Um so it seems the community loves it and wants to see it keep going. We had a good turnout last year. Really nice crowd of folks, um. Um just we had a lot of, a lot of socializing as well as dancing and. Kids participating in in the events we do for them, so there's really nothing we wanna change, it's just a repeat of the same. If the city wants to continue to support that event, then we wanna keep. Organizing it for you and for the community.
Okay, anyone?
Yes.
Couple questions.
Yeah, go for it.
You have music, right?
We have DJ music.
Okay, and what does he charge? It's not.
No, you're so the you're we I separated the two budgets to because there was some confusion last year, this year. You'll just you'll be able to just pay straight that vendor without the confusion of splitting everything half and half. The Gearheart Association pays half of the total budget and the city pays the other half, so what I did is just. You're gonna pay for the photo booths and you're gonna pay for the um. See that would be the face paint. And the kids table and the barrels that will hold the festival lights.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh and the second question is. How important is photo booth?
How important is the photo booth? Well, people love it. Um it's a fun thing for them to go get their photo taken, it's sort of a annual thing to do, uh marks, you know, their. Fourth of July in Gearheart, which these are local residents um. And um visitors, so it's just something that I'd like to do to recognize that Fourth of July time for in here.
Yeah, and just wondering, cuz we all have obviously can take tons of pictures on our phones and everybody's got a phone and everybody takes pictures and videos and. So I just wonder how that really fit in there.
How that fits in?
Yeah.
Well, it fits in as um added fun. Um centralized activities such as, I mean, they have all the props, so. Families get together, I mean, it's really fun and the families will go and they just put on the different props. And it just becomes, and you know, they get their photo taken, not only do they each get a copy of of that photo, but it also goes on a website for all year. Uh they can go back and look and it's a it's a celebration, it's a real popular thing that a lot of the schools do actually, uh and the districts. Um it's just a popular thing and it's sort of just a signature. Whereas if you're taking your photo with the phone, you know, it's like, oh, here's, you know, here's that phone.
Yeah, I know, I was just curious, I didn't know that much was involved.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is, I'm glad you asked, um it and it is a lot of fun, I'd love for you to tell your kids photos taken. But it actually be fun to get some of the council managers together over there, but you know, you just be silly and you've got your props on and and it's fun. Thank you, any other questions?
Thank you for doing this again.
Absolutely, and thank you for your, that's a lot of help, I had a lot of good help too. And.
All right, but the budget for that is about fifteen hundred dollars, which is all right. Fifteen fifty? So.
Fifteen fifty.
Okay.
And then all the same kind of details as last year, everything would be this, you know, in the same that we do. Um there's, you know, short little difference, which is a positive difference this year, we um I found somebody rent us. Some barrel poles to hold up the festival lights, so we don't have to get six trucks this year, that is a real nice burden off. So, yeah, yeah, and it's very expensive to rent them because they're local, so.
Great.
So. Thank you, Melissa. Chad, do we just need a consensus? All those in favor of helping out with the street dance and having the street dance? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So passed. Great, thank you again, Melissa, for doing all the work that you do for.
Thanks, Tom, we appreciate it.
We just need to time this to make add into the record that it is Melissa's birthday.
It is your birthday today.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Melissa. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on, we have a seaside airport committee member.
Yeah, Randall Hems. Yeah.
Do you need more?
Uh your name and address.
Okay, it's an eight nine oh six six Ocean Drive, one four two. For five six. Um so um guy chair of the airport committee, I've been doing that for about, well, I've been on the committee for more than. The years maybe now, um. And uh yeah, I wanna thank you guys for having me here, I really just want to come and give a brief overview of the airport committee, the work we do and. Just kind of what goes on out of the airport, cuz from the sits back there or people don't know much about it, um. And uh and really, you know, I'm gonna try and keep this kind of short, but mainly I wanna be open to any questions, so um. Well, me, I'm been a pilot for going on three, five years now, a private, not commercial. Um but I have been involved in airports and. Uh flying advocacy, um helping people with uh aviation learning and things like that for most of those years, so I kind of have more. Involvement than just your standard private pilot, especially with various airport um operations. And uh. I'm part of a seven member committee, Joyce is here, she's one of them, Sharon is our our Gearheart representative, the committee has a permanent. Position for Gearheart representative. Uh so moving on, just uh wanna give a brief overview about the airport's history and types of operations. Um how it's administered and the key role in that. Um the city manages the airport by the public works director who. Um basically, the airport manager is a side job. Uh we've had seven airport managers slash public works directors since I've been on the committee. So a lot of our role is um maintaining the institutional members because these people come in, a lot of them. May have some involvement with airports, understanding a lot of them don't at all, so um we're really, you know, we advise them on that. Aspect of their their job essentially. Um we fill in those gaps and for the city's ordinance, the purpose of the committee is to act as an advisory body to the city council, this is directly from the ordinance. Act as an advisory body to the city council, city manager and public works directors slash city engineer regarding issues concerning the seaside public airport. Um in practice, uh reading here now from the orientation materials we give to new members. We do things like planning for instruct infrastructure improvements, researching and understanding grant opportunities, pay for those improvements. Providing aviation specific knowledge and expertise to airport management. Ensuring a safe environment is maintained for aviation operations. Helping to ensure the city remains in compliance with F A standards and the grant obligations. Addressing community concerns connected with the local business community. Supplementing the city's resources, for example, maintenance of airport grounds, we help out with that. Um and looking for opportunities to promote the airport. To the flying public and also uh any ways we can invite people in to experience what we're doing out there, such as we have an event. Uh most years, we try to have a flying event with an open house. Um. That's among other things, um kind of surprising little big airport, not much going on, but feels like we're busy a lot. Uh some things we don't do, we don't actually make decisions for the city, we're a committee, we make recommendations and advise. Uh we don't enforce F A regulations. Um if we see issues that need to be addressed, we will tell the F A about it. Um we don't control who flies in and out of the airport, but again, if there's something that's. A miss, we'll also talk to the F A or whoever it needs to be, um. So that's kind of about the the committee, as for the airport itself, it's about been around since. The forties, I don't know how many people might might know, I mean, a lot of people love. Historical knowledge around here and I find it fascinating, but it was a farmer's strip in the forties, it became. A state airport for several decades and eventually the cities were good over in nineteen ninety. Um operations are mostly flying tourists and local people, but there's also some military operations, there's some. Um chargers come in now and then, uh dropping people off, picking them up. Um like I said, military, uh we have O D F and W come and do health surveys from time to time. Um a few other working type operations. Um and you'll probably remember the bike plane guy, he hasn't been here for a while. Don't think he will be, but uh. Sightseeing operations is always something, it's possible to come back. So um much of our work is guided by the airport layout plan. The F A requires us to update that every year, every seven years or less, and we also require to keep a capital improvement projects list updated then. Which. That's guided several infrastructure projects over the last twenty years and. And uh including like a beacon tower, uh drainage, um improvements and repairs, uh some fencing. Uh lighting, we had a big lighting upgrade, that was all paid for ninety five percent by F A or or the Department of Aviation. With a five percent match from the city. Um actually, some of that is was actually covered by the state as well, so no cost to the city. And all that work, there's local contractors wherever possible. That kind of runs down what I have to tell you about the airport, I really would hope you guys would. You know, I don't wanna get into the weeds too much, but if you wanna get me into the weeds, I'm happy to do it, so um. That's where we're at.
Great, do you have any questions? I have a question because I went to a North Coast Land Conservancy presentation and um. The fellow used a NOAA. Map and the projection is that at high tide, the airport is going to start flooding. In twenty tw- in twenty thirty. And what do you what do you have as far as plans as? As far as that is concerned, cuz I was totally unaware of this and he comes up with this map and it shows. All that trailer port area and the runways flooded.
Yeah, um so that's a good question, we haven't really addressed that very significantly. Um other than, so we uh like I mentioned our capital improvement project list. And uh number four, six on that is flood hydraulic hydraulic. Hydraulic studies. Um. Uh. All those things, that's gonna probably cost, you know, well, it says right here what we have an estimate on. Um twenty thousand or no, hundred eighty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, so. Those are really wild guesses, but when you start into those sorts of things, especially to F A standards, they get really. Expensive fast, and so how we're gonna come up with that money, I don't know. Uh what we're gonna do in the meantime, I don't know, in the meantime, what we do do is we go down and we inspect. Regularly, especially where it tends to flood at the south end and the high tide, the king tides, um and we clear off the. Dripped like and we have. Notes for airport users in the F A notes, which says, okay, I'll forget one in the winter. Um we're we're not the only airport like that, Pacific City gets a bigger uh flag, they've always had flag, our flooding has actually not been. Is is recent within my memory, are seeing some flooding, I think it's partly because of subsidence. And also there's, you know, four inches of water from when it didn't used to, when it used to be zero at a high tide, there's now four inches of water, cuz that's. What we've seen for uh of sea level rise, basically. And so um. I don't know if that answers your question, it's on our radar, but it hasn't.
It's on your radar, I just was curious because I thought it came out of left field when they had this presentation and. I just want.
Yeah, and and what that would involve, who knows, I mean, uh. We would have to see what that study would, you know, would come up with as a recommendation, sir.
Where can we get a li- is there a way, someplace that we can see your list of capital improvement projects that you have?
Um this is actually on our website, although this version I have now, I realized is not quite up to date. Um we've actually been trying to get the city to update it as well beyond what we uh. Was published now once with the F A, but again, we've got four airport managers in the last three years. And so that sort of getting those things through, we could when they don't even know how to, you know, who to talk to at the F A and everybody at the F A has. You know, changed, there's a lot of turnover, it's hard to get some of that stuff done, but um. Uh there is a version on the website, I'll update it before I, when I go home, because I just noticed when I printed this out tonight, that um. There have been some minor updates to it, anyway, uh and I can send that to you too.
Is it this, is it the city website with the?
We actually have like a Friends of Seaside Airport website, which is seasideairport.org. And that's where we keep most of the things, if we if we do it on the city's website, then. Again, you know, uh keeping an update is gonna be a lot more complicated, so we just do this as a, you know. As an org. SeasideAirport.org, and if you go to the administration page, that's where all these materials are, I put in our airport layout, my capital improvements list. Those are generally on the right, you see the uh. The agendas down on the left side and then on the right side, there's materials kind of scattered among because that's when they came up in a committee meeting a lot of times. So you kind of have to look down for them, but they're there.
Are are any of those capital improvement projects, those things that you're ready to pull the trigger on, or is this just a wish list?
Well, uh most of it's a wish list cuz funding is tight. Um. Uh we are currently, our biggest priority is to just get the Willow brush proven along Oster Road because of the safety. Aspects of the um aircraft coming in, we have a somewhat less uh. Uh prior, lower priority of getting uh some fencing along the edge of Bayview there and possibly along Oster Road. Just to improve the security and also just kind of give us a boundary with Bayview because their operations are bleeding into the airport a little bit. And uh those are sort of the main priorities now, a lot of these, the rest of these are. Pretty much blue sky until we can find funding, oh well, the one, number one is pavement management, um. We've been about five years since there's been significant pavement management or striping on the airport and some of the areas are getting pretty checked. And the the state has a program, the State Department of Aviation has a program where they come and do that. Every two years extensively, it's been five years, you know, with COVID and everything else. And apparently it's just been pushed back to to next year, but they have done a study, which was, this is quite extensive, so they know the portions that need to be. Uh improved and paved and things like that, repaved and. Um so that's actually our for one priority, but it's uh. Gonna be paid for by the state, which is nice.
Okay, anybody else?
I really welcome any any questions you guys have after the fact, um and can go through that website to communicate. And thank you for having me here.
Okay, well, thank you for coming out. All right, we're gonna move. Public communications, anyone wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest? Not on the agenda, they do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person, requests to comment electronically. Must be submitted by email to thecityrecorder@info@cityofgearhart.com, no later than four P M the day of the meeting. In persons attend, in person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. No one signed in. So.
I didn't sign in, I didn't know I was supposed to.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna come to you and say, state your name and address.
Robin Lane. Seven one five Second Street.
Okay.
And I just um wanted to. Talk about briefly the giant thick cuscus trees on a Neacoxi and um. How much they are the character of this town and how old they are. And how incredible of a um ecosystem filled with all kinds of animals and birds. All kinds of animals and birds and how um they, it feels like that whole corridor between. Here and. Um ten street is in jeopardy of basically being cut down and gone. Not just, you know, just the amount of development that's going to happen and. Things that are up for sale and sold and projects that are in the works. Um you know, or scores and scores of those huge trees so that we stand. Wherever we are and look that way, which looks like your heart, it will be no, no trees or all very few and it's. Such a beautiful and wild place. I I know that there's lots of pine trees and. The beautiful dunes, but there's a wildness about that forest. That is really um a treasure. That's what makes this place in some ways to me what it is. And I just want, I know there's so many people that I hear about and things that I see that are so deeply, deeply concerned about this. And I don't know what we can do. Um but it seems like a city treasure that we are very close to losing completely. And as my eight-year-old granddaughter said. Where are all the animals going to go? And what are we gonna, you know, there is just a. I don't know. I I just wanted to be a voice of that because I hear people all the time talking about it. Um. And I know there's a lot of concern. And it's irreplaceable and you can't replace those trees. You're talking about seventy two inches. They're way bigger than that, a lot of them. And um but mostly it's a whole world, a natural world that we live among. That is really danger of disappearing. So I just want to say that. I don't know what what I want to say, what I want you to say, but I I want to voice this concern that I hear every day from people about. That part of this town and and how close we are to completely losing it and is there anything we can do? And that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. But we are trying, as you can see, we're still fighting with the ordinance that took two years to get on the books. But um. There's one thing about those big trees and as once you cut them, they don't come back. You know, not for a couple of hundred years and we got to. Personally. Not as mayor, but personally, I would protect each and every one of the big trees if I had my druthers. Because that's the way I feel about it. Not because I'm a tree hugger, but because I enjoy them. I enjoy the birds that are in them. I enjoy the animals that live in the root systems. I enjoyed the promise that. I just enjoy that. So anyway, thank you very much.
And I know that between uh second and first, there was like so many trees are so close to going and. That might be the thickest, deepest, darkest, most beautiful forests in this whole city. And it's magic and it could be gone really soon. Is there the plans that it doesn't be gone?
Yes, that's quite true.
Hard to imagine.
Uh it isn't hard to imagine because it's happening everywhere.
I know it's awful to imagine and I thank you for your feelings. I appreciate it.
Quite all right. All right, moving on. We have here a letter from L O C um. Asking for donation because of their continuing um. Scholarships. And training that they do for. Elected officials. I would like to. Move that we give them a hundred dollars. Can we afford that? Just saying, master of money. Should I come back at a later time when you're in a better mood? If you say no, it's perfectly all right. I can wait until the budget process and then I can leave my piece.
I think we should wait till the budget process.
Yeah, a hundred dollars is.
We should wait until we see, well, the state revenue share funds come. Could you get over your discretionary fund?
Yeah.
And the mayor's discretionary fund.
Okay, that's.
Just those are going to be our money and everything.
And and anybody can give money to the L O C Foundation Board of Directors.
Yes, they can. We have a uh moving on, is that all right? Moving on, there's a letter from Bob Carson about the uh. Lot or lots between First and Second Avenue and his description of. Sea rise. And the Cascadia effect. Another letter from uh Saint Vincent de Paul. Thanking us for our donation and the North Coast Land Conservancy. And their donation that they got, I believe that was out of the um. The road district funds.
State revenue, yeah.
State bank, state revenue sharing fund. All right. Written public, they read.
Where was late correspondence care?
Where is there? Oh, the proposed tree removal? Is that the one?
Yeah, the one with the uh logo on the bottom there.
There's actually two. There's two.
Okay, and so in the late communications, there is one from Robin Lane?
That's me, I just said it.
Okay. I knew I recognized that name. And the other one is from Lori O'Neil and that's a. Again, about the first and second lot developments.
Can I say something about this?
Say something.
You know, if everybody's up in arms about the first and second street development and everything like that, why don't they just? Put up a fund and buy the property from the. Current owner. Every every. Lot in Gearhart was planted on a fifty by hundred lot. And the people that bought these. You know, and paid taxes on them all this time. For generations. You know, now it seems to me like we're stymying what it is that they want to do with their property. So if if the city of Gearhart and the citizens of Gearhart don't want those. Pieces of property developed, come up with the money and buy the property.
Can I give you some background on that?
Okay.
That's a question. Can I give them background?
You can give them some background. I don't want to go into the weeds as they say.
We want to be really careful about any sort of application that um might. Potentially come before you as a council because I wouldn't. I think everyone's spoken personally and no one has indicated that they couldn't objectively hear a land use. Application that might come in front of you as a council, but I think we need to be really cautious, particularly if people seem to think that there might be a land use application coming in front of you. So we might want to err on the side of. Not discussing.
Okay, so we're not going to discuss it and we're not going to talk anymore about it. We're going to move on to the next. Cost recovery services. Oh, excuse me, recovery service fees.
Yes, sir.
So do you want Chad to read it or do you want to uh wait until he reads it and then make your uh?
I can summarize the process real quick.
Okay.
And uh Division Chief Andy and Attorney Watson have been working on this. Andy has put together the information. Provided to you showing how this would work, the descriptions in the um. In the staff report, we have the resolution one zero zero one. I was written by attorney Peter Watson. Exhibit A shows some of the costs that's been scanned because the law can on. Uh from there, I'll just uh let you folks. Ask any questions, Andy, if you have them. And uh we also put a recommended staff motion on this. Uh yes, we have the recommended motion there in your council options. And I just want to thank Chief Andy. It she she went through so much material. And so much data to kind of get to these rates and. Made it really easy for me to understand best practices and what everyone else was doing and. And things that maybe should have been obvious to me that weren't, and she did it. Uh just so comprehensively and I think. I think we've gotten to something that will help offset. Um people's time and help us recover, particularly when we're out of district.
Okay. Anyone, any questions for Chief Andy? Chad, do you want to read this? Resolution?
Well, do you want to make a motion?
If you want to make a motion, go ahead.
Motion to approve resolution one zero zero one, reading wants to. Second.
Any discussion? Thanks a lot for catching that.
I just have one, one question real quick. Um. Under the piece, is this i- is this the final version or should be clarified that like false alarm fees, it should be. Um three hundred dollars per incident after. In the not clarifying there.
Well, it just says three hundred dollars and then um lift assist facility, two hundred dollars. Um. I I'm just asking for for Peter's looking in if it's implied or if it's if it's clear enough.
I think it's, I think it's on a on a per incident basis.
The false alarm is, it's got the fees charged after the third incident per year.
Right, so you could have two false alarms in the third, and these are all waivable as well. They can be appealed in the in the police. Or excuse me, the fire sheet can waive them if there's hardship. Yeah, but this is on a per incident basis.
This is more, I'll give you a little more clarification. When we talk about false alarm fees, we're talking about um. Per instance, there's a house out in certain pines that no one even lives there and we'd get called six, seven, eight, nine, ten times. For a medical alarm alert and no one lives there. And no one to contact, things like that. And that would basically stop. Us sending an, you know, a fire truck and an ambulance out there six, seven times in one night because there's a windstorm. Those are the things that that's aimed at and more of that is kind of aimed, um again, more towards the commercial side, right, or people like um. Care homes, right? People that should have trained people on site. That are being paid, that are not as volunteers, um should be able to respond.
All right, so for example, on the business license inspection, you're asking a hundred and fifty dollars. So you go out there, you find a problem, you have it, they have to correct it, you come back, it's, they're not being charged an additional hundred and fifty, it's just a hundred and fifty per application.
So business license inspection is when someone comes to me, I'm going to be putting any new business here. And um what that would do is they are required by the state uh to have an inspection by a farm marshal for fire C H E style. Um it's a very common fee that's actually charged across the the whole state of Oregon. Um and typically it'd be charged um in the building department. But because we have a building department here and a building department uh Clatsop County, it it just made sense to make one flat fee. So again, it's all waivable, it's it's by basis, but it's it. It's more or less, okay, I'm going to build a Dollar General. Okay, um that is separate than some um. That is separate than I think what you're thinking, which would be a commercial inspection that is also required by the state. The business licenses, I'm applying for a business license to build a Dollar General. I have to go in, I have to do review of their fire sprinkler systems. This could be days of work, so even a hundred and fifty dollars wouldn't even cover my time, but it'd be something.
Right, so depending on the business, it they might need a commercial fire suppression sprinkler system or based off the. Equipment that they have. If we have like a multi-story building and they don't have a ladder truck, then we'd need that industrial sprinkler system. And also likely interior stairwells with through vast cess so that they can fight it. So. Any any set of plans that comes in, fire staff has to perform what's called a fire like safety. Assessment of it and then goes back to the city and says, we can approve these plans because of X or. We we would require, because of these factors like building height, we would require them to do X, Y, and Z, and it can, it can be a. It can be substantial, particularly for commercial properties. So this one hundred and fifty dollars is actually very small, it is.
Yeah, when I did my research, um most of the state of Oregon range anywhere from about two thousand to ten thousand dollars for business lessons. For just the fire department recovery fees.
Thankfully, ours are so stale because of our zone code. So we have some flexibility and we do this shop for the first while and see how well it works and then if we need to make any adjustments. Sure, Mr. Andy, uh Chief, excuse me, Chief Andy will. Um. Comes with.
And this is, we'll have a warming period, right? I'm not just going to be like, I'm the new farm marshal in town. Here's some fees. Uh we're going to have a warming period, see how things kind of work out, uh and give people the benefit of the doubt for most of this because I think a lot of this community has never. Um I in fact, I just had an incident a couple of weeks ago. They've never had to be inspected. There's been no sheriff in town for lack of better terminology. So. I've worked with them diligently. They were super awesome. We came up to a solution that was cost effective and safe. Um until you get the solution fixed, um and no fees were charged, right? It cost me about three days of my time to to get it figured out, but um the goal would be future land. Now you know. Let's not do it again, kind of thing.
Okay. Any other discussion now that we have a motion on the table?
What are the Oregon State Fire Marshal forage?
I got him behind us. I'll tell you.
It's funny, while she's been waiting in here, uh fire department's been called to a structure fire on point six, so they're assisting with that right now. And then also a gas leak at the buzzing air car, so we're working that right now as well. So she's, you're doing this and getting the crews out at the same time.
I should have a copy of this year's. Wow, I have every single fire department in here that I copied, by the way, so.
Okay, so don't worry about it.
Okay, I can get it for you.
And his box is in the office, just put it in and so he's got it.
It's um it's also available online. If you look up O S F M and I think it's page like teen. Um and it just says the rates, they change it every year, it comes out every year uh with the Oregon State Mobilization Plan. Um and it's usually pretty unanimous about everyone. They they charge usually um. What it would cost for the personnel and the apparatus to go out there.
Any other questions? Chad, will you read this resolution, please?
Oh, no, I lost it.
We left it out, it'll be back in some.
Would you like mine?
Resolution one thousand and one, this is the other first resolution since Gearhart has been Gearhart. Cost recovery services, whereas in January, the city council passed ordinance nine four five and ordinance implementing cost recovery services in the city of Gearhart. And whereas the ordinance was created to allow the state to recover costs associated with first class services, particularly when responding outside the district and. Whereas such cost recovery ordinances are specifically allowed. By the state law and widely used in Oregon and whereas the city council adopted place for fees with the expectation that Gearhart fire staff calculate your hard service. These based on the actual cost of providing a service at scan, whereas a fee schedule has been developed and has been peer reviewed. Now therefore, the city of Gearhart advances phones. Based case rate costs for services are identified and the attachments that are paid are itemized service fees.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Thank you very much, Chief. You're on your way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And now we have a new business. Change order number one with the class group. Chad, you want to give us the synopsis?
Yes, Mr. Marin, I believe we also have Chris from the class group here online. Uh so the city of Gearhart has extended the overall project scheduled by six months. Uh for the public safety vote to support a November twenty twenty five ballot initiative instead of the previous anticipated May twenty twenty five ballot. To accommodate the revised timeline, class group has been requested to provide additional services, including an added set of extra site visits, city council work session. Meetings with building official, increased community engagement. meetings with building official, increased community engagement sessions. But if services exceeding scope outlined in the original PSA or Professional Services Agreement date of March twenty seven, twenty twenty four, your approval of this change order, if you choose to do so, and the corresponding fund allocation will facilitate the necessary adjustments for project timeline and community engagement efforts. Do you have your mo- uh your options there, motion to approve the change order number one, authorizing additional services by Clash Group up to nine thousand eight hundred eighty-three using the building reserve funds or taking other actions out of our council? Uh the staff recommended motion is the motion to approve change order number one, authorizing additional services by Clash Group uh at a cost of nine thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and allocating ten thousand dollars in building reserve funds to cover the expense and support continuing project progress in alignment with the updated schedule. Uh the change order is attached, we have the financial analysis and in our, I didn't put a total on what we have available in our building reserve fund at the moment. Um but we don't have a running total because we still have some liabilities that need to come out of that, that there is the amount of ten thousand dollars in there to cover this. And I'm here for any questions, and if I can answer them, I've got Chris, Mr. Grant here as well to help us out.
Okay. Does anyone have a motion? I move that we deny this change order.
Second.
This change, I need a second. Okay, we go to discussion. If you look at this change order, it does nothing about extending anything beyond May of twenty twenty five. If you look at their original documentation, they said they would work through May of twenty twenty five. So I see no reason to give them more just to go to the end of May twenty twenty five. Doesn't say anything about going beyond that. It says that the uh committee increased the schedule by six months to support a November twenty twenty five ballot initiative. But it doesn't say anything about continuing the service beyond May of twenty twenty five. And so I, I say we deny it as a outright. They're asking for nine thousand dollars more to continue until the end of May, and that's where their contract ends, is the end of May. That's my opinion. Anyone else got anything to say during this discussion period?
I think that originally, when we signed up with the Clash Group, that the bond measure was gonna go to the general public.
When Chad?
We were initially looking at going in May of this May of twenty twenty five.
Right.
And then quickly figured out that that we did not have enough time uh to actually do that in certain circumstances, about uh the work that they had to do and that we're still doing and that we're still going through to make it to the November ballot. There was also, you know, more in-person visits and meetings that originally accounted for included uh we had more visits than uh Clash Group was expecting uh to get us going with this process. Uh there was some semi-regular city council meetings that they were expected to attend, however, they were not uh in the original contract. Uh there was an additional town hall meeting that was added, that was not in the original scope. Clash Group proposal assumed two community engagement meetings. And then uh now we're down, we're up to four community engagement meetings uh to make sure that we have enough input from our community. Um moving forward, Clash Group uh would continue if if it was approved, uh would continue to assist us March, April, May, June, so some of the tasks that they would be uh doing for the city. Uh we have uh in April, pricing set review meeting, uh the bi-weekly meeting that will be coming up at the end of the month. In May, bi-weekly meeting, include themselves in in assistant community meeting number four. We were talking about two initially, so this would be number four, and a bi-weekly meeting. And then in June, these dollars would include the bond measure preparation, assisting with that and a bi-weekly meeting. And then uh for September to November, they have down although an estimated six hours, but the slantiest asks and if there's any additional town hall, we don't know. Uh so that would mean that our remaining paper on the contract is about eight thousand thirty-six dollars. And uh this would be an additional nine thousand eight hundred eighty-three to finish us through that process. And if, Chris, are you there?
Yep, yeah, I've been here the whole time, so um the, yeah, I I need to clarify something that you said there, Chad. So the, the, the mayor is correct that the change order that's uh um up on the table right now, change order one and the amount of nine thousand eight eighty-three takes Clash Group through the end of May, includes no hours uh in June and beyond. Um so just wanted to, to mention that Clash Group had prepared a change order that extended services all the way until the November timeframe, when the new uh uh anticipated bond measure is going out. Uh but that change order, we were asked to revise it uh to reduce it in scope uh to get us through uh just uh through the hours uh in May. So that is the change order that you're looking at right now.
Okay, so through May would include the bi-weekly meeting, the community meeting number four and potentially another bi-weekly meeting in May, would that be included or not?
Yep, that's correct, yep, and include, yep, and includes a lot of the, the activities associated with uh the cost validation and comparing the uh third-party cost estimators um uh work on the two concepts uh so that we can move closer to understanding the cost of the PSB building uh so we can put that into the ballot.
Okay.
Uh. So what are we paying them so far?
I mean, I don't know that I can answer that right yet, um.
I don't have any voice, I don't know that share.
Uh essentially, maybe.
Oh, right.
Uh what was the uh, what was the total on the agreement, Chris, currently?
Um I don't know if I have that up right now, I believe it was somewhere in the range of fifty-six to fifty-eight thousand, somewhere in that range.
Eight thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, so we probably spent somewhere near about fifty thousand.
Right.
Okay, well, I mean, we're committed for fifty-eight, right?
Right, through May.
Yeah. So I guess my question is are the functions that Clash is going to provide for us, are they not going to be provided by FAA to some extent? And do we really need more services from them?
Uh Chris, do you want to take that one on?
Uh yes, I believe, I believe our services are vital uh to get us through to the end of May uh in the preparation for a bond. Um uh yes, I, if, if you'd like specifics on why that's important, I can, I can start to get into those.
Yes, please.
Okay, um so yeah, we, I, I think one of the most important things is uh putting, putting correct factual information uh into your ballot measure. So uh the people um that are gonna be voting on uh approving this ballot for the construction of a new uh professional safety building, public safety building um are uh, you know, that, that information is accurate and uh they're, they're going to support it. Um architects, uh FFA has done a great job um of uh designing, getting the concepts done, uh doing some of the community outreach and website updating. Uh they are, they are architects, they, they draw, and then they're gonna get a third-party cost estimate, estimate from um a, a third-party cost estimation firm. And we have found in the past that uh the third-party cost estimation uh it doesn't, isn't the most accurate uh estimate. And there is a lot of stuff that we can do in terms of comparing it to historical projects, comparing it to other local projects that are currently in construction right now or have recently uh been constructed. And we have found that um in the past, some of the budgets that have been I uh put together and in some cases have been approved by jurisdictions to move forward are uh unfortunately uh inaccurate and not I, not uh complete enough to actually build the project that they once hoped for. Um I have an example for uh the Nahalem, Nahalem Bay uh Health Center had a similar thing and uh we needed to go back and do quite a bit of redesign in order to make sure that we could provide what it is um for the budget that was anticipated. So Clash Group is really going to roll up our sleeves with that cost validation and help validate RLB's estimate, the third-party cap, cost estimator, to ensure that the information that is going into the ballot is accurate. And at the end of the day, you're asking for the correct amount of money in order to build this building. Um I'll also add that uh Clash Group isn't the only uh entity or organization that um has needed to spend more time in this effort uh due to I uh requested additional town hall meetings, additional council work session meetings, et cetera. And the way that their contract was set up is they included a certain amount of professional contingency in their contract that could be used at uh with written authorization. And that is how FFA has uh been um made whole, if you will, for the amount of increased meetings that they needed to attend. Um they were able to just utilize that professional contingency that was built into their contract. Uh hi- hindsight, looking back, it probably would have been um a good idea to include professional contingency um in Clash Group's contract. So in the event of something like this occurring, like being requested to attend uh more town hall meetings, more community engagement sessions uh than we clearly outlined in our proposal, uh we simply could have just obtained it from that professional contingency and uh not have to go back to uh the council and, you know, uh move money around in the budget, et cetera.
So the cost estimate function, is that not supposed to happen between now and May?
Yes, the cost, the cost validation effort, preparing your anticipated cost report so you can outline how much your, your, your project is gonna cost and how much ultimately you're gonna need to ask for funding is currently scheduled to occur in the month of May.
So, don't we have that covered by what we are paying?
No, we would take what we have left in that contract plus an additional eight thousand dollars to get us there. Because of what he was bringing up, the additional meetings that we had, uh the additional town hall, some of the things that have come up that uh they had to respond to and that sort of thing, so that, that's an additional amount of money. Now, I mean, you could look at uh if we don't have Clash Group do these things, uh you know, the cost portion of this is very important, having that third set of eyes taking a look at that, making sure that we're heading down the right path and going to the public with the correct numbers. If Clash Group doesn't do that, then we rely on the uh the, the cost estimating company and the architects uh to do that for us. Uh and or, you know, potentially increase a little bit of workload to staff, several other specialty.
All I want to say is this, we hired these guys in our interests. The last bond failed because we tried to do theirs ourselves, or the city tried to do it themselves. These people are the go-between, okay? They're looking out for the city of Gearheart's best interest. FFAs, you know, and whomever it is that they're hiring in order to do the cost analysis, this is just our backstop here. And I think it would be foolish not to continue with the Clash Group. Do we want this, do we want this bond measure to have a chance? Or do we want to not have a chance?
We, we've proven from, from the get-go that we as a group are ill-equipped to manage this project without them. We thought we could have it for some people on this, I do not. Some people on this council thought that we could have it on this coming May's ballot. And we wrote up an RFP in agreement with them that we would be ready to go by May, which would really mean that their, the, the bulk of their work would have been done, would have had to have been done back in December, January. That was number one. We also, in our RFP, we gave them, we, we came to an agreement about the number, did we come to the agreement about the number of meetings? But we initially thought the number of meetings that we would need turned out to be woefully inadequate. We've asked them time and time and time again to come here. They have been contacted by members of the public with ridiculous letters and cartoons and other things people calling and, and wasting their time asking them questions that should have been routed through the city. They've spent a lot of time, and I'm here to tell you right now, that because of the mistakes we've already made, it's very clear to me that we need them at least through May. If you want to have this discussion again about whether we're gonna extend them after May, I, you're gonna have a real problem with not paying them for work that you've already asked them to do.
Well, I'm looking at documentation here that says that we're gonna have four community meetings, and this is from May of twenty-four. It doesn't say all the meetings that the committee had. Since I wasn't involved in that, I don't know how many extra meetings you have. But when you make a bid for a job and you say, I will do this job for this much money, that's your bid. Now, if you have added expenses because I asked for a meeting in December.
And August.
And August.
Last August or this coming August, last?
Yeah. Okay, so I count myself bad for two meetings, that's nine thousand dollars?
Dear Mayor.
Yes?
If I could just clarify something, when we talked about, and this was a conversation I had with Jesse, I can't remember if not, not immediately, but early on about the dates. I said it's possible at the end of this process, we won't go on the ballot, that we need, in my opinion, uh broad-based community support of the project because that's what the community expected of us. That the earliest we would go on the ballot was November. So I think if, if we were to look back on that communications as far as the timeline, it was the this has always been, as far as my understanding and what it conveyed to others, an exercise in listening and gathering the data so an informed decision can be made. Like the, what Jesse wanted was a commitment to go onto the ballot. What I said is I do not believe that our city council will put something on the ballot unless they believe that it's going to pass because we've already experienced that. And so I, yeah, I normally I'll say something when people say, well, we're gonna put it on the ballot on November. But I think it's really important that the no, the no, the council has not said you're gonna put it on the ballot. We could get polling at the end of June, and depending on how the polling comes out, you could just say, you know what? We're gonna have to do a bunch more community engagement and we're gonna push it out a year or two or whatever it is. Or maybe polling could come back and say, um wow, there, there really is broad-based community support and it makes sense to go on to the next general election ballot. But there is no, as far as I understand, there's been no decision that's been made, there's no binding agreement to go onto the ballot. It will be based off of uh polling or community surveys or, or whatever other means are utilized to gauge community support for the project.
That's a good point, thank you.
Thank you, Peter, because there's always a good way to do things. And that's a good way to do it, is not get caught up in thinking that we have to do it by November. Okay. I believe I made a motion, I withdraw my motion. Can I do that? I believe I can, can't I, Peter?
It was seconded.
Oh, if the second or we'll release the second.
It's fine. So do you want to give a motion?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve change order number one, authorizing additional services by Klosch Group up to nine thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars using building reserve funds.
I see. Any discussion?
I just feel like it's a lot of money. And, um, because we're probably not even getting that survey in June out of this. You know, if, if they threw in the surveying in June, I'd be all for it. I, I just haven't seen that much. I know, Dana, you've been at all these other meetings. I understand. What happened last year, that's what I, I don't, of course, I wasn't on the council. I, I just, like.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Uh, we'll be called tomorrow.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question.
A question for who?
Tell me, Chad, maybe Peter. I don't really know. So can they come back and ask for, for instance, like half that amount, or, I don't know how this works.
Sure. Anything is possible.
They can make a request to be on the May agenda.
And staff can request as well, but nobody has something on the agenda.
All right. So let us move on to council concerns, I believe, is just the second. Council concerns. Dan?
Um, well, first of all, I think that, um, it's the time of year for me to announce that I want to add the Fourth of July discussion to the next agenda, so that we start to prepare for Fourth of July.
Good idea.
My next question is for you, old treasurer. Um, a lot of folks that have in the past have applied for scholarships have been asking me, why can't we apply for scholarships? And I tried to explain individually what's going on with, you know, with the revenue share this year and how we're particularly concerned about it next year and our budget next year. Um, is, is that accurate, that we are going to have that discussion during the budget process? And if we decide that there will be a scholarship program, there will be open and there will be announcements at that time.
Yeah, we didn't change anything. We have, we opened it out and sent it, the application and everything out to everybody. We modified, yeah, we modified the application to encourage people. We put a box on there that was two hundred and fifty, five hundred, and then another amount, and then we did put a notice on there just that we weren't sure with, with funding, what the outcome might be, but we kept the process the same because we hadn't changed anything with the budget committee. So we sent, we blogged it out, and we sent out a personal email to everybody who had applied and received before.
Okay. All right, so I appreciate that. So maybe I'll have a conversation with you outside of this, and then follow up with the people that ask questions and share it better. Yeah, it was, they asked, it's out on our website. If they want to fill out an application and submit, and we would encourage them to do so, and we will give all of the applications. Um, and the first meeting, just like, we don't, no decisions are made until the second meeting.
So that blog came out about two weeks ago, maybe, two, three months ago?
Yeah, till next Friday. Okay, thank you. Um, and then my last, um, concern is an announcement that I am stepping down from the committee. And, um, as the mayor has repeatedly said, that he has not been involved, and I've heard people saying that they're not involved. And they don't understand how the decisions are being made. I think it would benefit this council for somebody else to take my place, that they can understand what's going on. I do believe that what he said is true, and that our numbers are, um, that architects and engineers are notoriously poor at estimating costs, and I think that the problem will get bigger and worse without them, and that is not something that I feel, I, you've just created something that is gonna take much, much more time than I would and, and be on my skill set. So I think that somebody else should step up and be on the committee.
Dan? Sharon?
Um, two concerns. Uh, first one, I'm, uh, wondering about the road disrepair on Pacific Way at the Neacoxi Bridge. Um, I walk by there al- almost every day, and, um, the holes, there's two holes actually, are, I'm pretty sure getting larger, and they fill with water, which is gotta undermine the underneath, the next layer down, and the street itself is in bad shape. So my question is, could we have, uh, Public Works come and discuss that with us, or write us just to be educated about what they're thinking about it and what their plans are for?
Uh, yeah, we, we couldn't have him come in. I've already asked him to give us a, a, kind of a little study on what's happening with that, what, what his concerns are with the culvert here at Pacific Way. He's also looking at getting some paving done at the beginning of Pacific Way. Uh, but we're working on it because they're also looking at getting some improvements out there, so we're trying to work with them. And then another space he's looking at is kind of that road that is, uh, from the intersection, uh, of a while. We had a lot of construction in town over the last few years that has definitely impacted our roadways. And, uh, he is putting those together. Once he's finished with those, I'll ask him to come up and speak to the council and talk to them about what he's.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Second concern is the property along the Neacoxi between First and Second. Uh, pro- proposed, not yet permitted. Uh, it is for two houses to go in there. Uh, one of those two houses entails cutting down at least fourteen of the old girls' spruce. So, uh, as you all can imagine, because you know what I'm like about trees, this is, uh, beyond heartbreaking to me that this would be happening. And I just wanted to put it out there for the public, because I'd love to know what the public thinks about it.
Oh, I know.
Uh, I also just had, uh, someone come to me and hope that we would, um, pardon our messaging a little bit on Fourth of July, so I applaud us getting that on the agenda. And then, um, it's not really a concern, it's more an interest. I think, follow this up with Chad, uh, just i- in the administrative area, um, our procedures and how many of them we actually have in writing, should we need to do training or education. I talked to Justine about some in her area. Um, personnel policies I've talked with, um, Chad about since I've been back on the council. There's just some areas that I'd like to go over with him and, and maybe we can get some of those things written up, but they're not already.
And Dan? Preston?
All I have to say is, um, I'm gonna follow Dana in, uh, design from the public safety link committee. I think you guys did this city a real adjust.
Okay. Thanks a lot for all the time you two have served on it. Really appreciate it. I'm sorry to see you leave at the very end like this, but, um, you have to do what you feel is right. Thank you very much. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.